All right, we will call the March 5th, 2020 Broker and Planning Commission to order. Please let the record note that Commissioner Dickman is absent today. And we do have quorum. Those that would like, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, it looks a pretty low crowd today. So, let us move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Any changes, corrections?
Yes, on the liaison calendar, it has me down for May 5, 14, and I won't be here. I'm actually gonna be, I'm leaving for several months, so I won't be here.
I can jump in.
So, we usually do that at item eight, so we should look at all of, there's a couple of other ones we want to mention.
Oh, okay.
Can we talk about that under that agenda?
We can, absolutely.
Okay. All right, any other changes or corrections? Without any, take a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
All right, all those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, open forum. Are any of you folks here for open forum? All right, we will move on then to item five, the minutes from January 2nd. I went through, I didn't notice any changes.
I didn't have anything, a motion to approve if that's what you're asking.
Okay.
I'll second that move.
All right, all those in favor of approving the minutes from January 2nd, say aye.
Aye.
All right, item six, new business, item A, public hearing, Kissner application for variance and preliminary, we will entertain this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a request to subdivide a 3.7 acre parcel. The property is currently zoned, let me start again, the property is zoned rural residential, and is currently divided by County Road 50. So, this is the cemetery owned by the Church of St. Thomas the Apostle. The south side is vacant and has been used by the Kissners as ag land, and the north side is the cemetery itself. You can see on this image, and so the Kissners would purchase the south half from the cemetery, which they've been using, as I say, for a number of years. You can see on the aerial that their driveway crosses the west side of this triangle property that they would purchase. St. Jean Chantel is the name of the cemetery again on the north, and the south portion is the piece that would be purchased. On the plat, the south half is shown as Lot 1, Block 2. And we are recommending in the staff report that it be platted as an outlot because there are no development rights. And I'll talk a little bit more about that, but we would recommend that auto revise that to call that south lot an outlot. So, the subdivision would create a 1.7 acre lot on the north for the cemetery, and a 1.2 acre lot on the south for the Kissners, and we would recommend that be an outlot. Neither of these new parcels meets the minimum lot area for the Rural Residential Zoning District because it's deeding just the existing, what we call a prescriptive easement for County Road 50. As part of that, there wasn't enough ever formal dedication, but under the law where the county road is, the county owns. So, this would formally dedicate that as part of the plat. The southern lot does not have a development right as it's being used on the north with the cemetery. The southern lot has the Kissner's driveway, it also has a portable shed that they use for a seasonal produce stand. And for the planning commission, I've made note of this in my file, but one of the things I realized as we looked at this is we really don't have standards for produce stands. We want to encourage them, we talk about allowing them, but I don't think we want to treat them like accessory buildings. So, we, I've made a note that when we update the ordinance, we probably want to look at those setbacks for those kinds of structures. Because no buildable lots are created, no park dedication is required. At this time, the county is not requiring dedication of any additional right of way. After the packet went out, we did get a letter from the county, that'll be included in the council packet, that says while they're not requiring dedication of right of way now, in the future, if the Kissner property, including this new outlot gets subdivided, they will require the standard additional right of way. I have talked with the landowners about a driveway and maintenance agreement. Anytime we have a driveway serving a house on one lot crossing a different lot, we get a driveway maintenance and easement agreement in place. So, they're aware of that and are working on that. Again, there's two variants. The first variance is to allow an outlot and a lot to be created that don't meet the minimum lot size. And the second variance is to allow the southern lot to be created without a development right. In the staff report, I outlined the variance standards and how I believe the variance standards have been met. This is a very unique circumstance. The second outlot on the south there will in the future be combined, as a condition will be combined with one of the two parcels owned by the Kissners, outlined in red here. And they've really chosen not to combine it with either of them now, simply to leave their options open for future sale. Because they could sell one of the lots separately, and wouldn't be required to combine that new outlot with one of those existing lots. It simply gives them more options. However, if the planning commission, the variance standards do have to be met, we've outlined how we believe the variance standards have been met. But if the planning commission finds that all of the variance standards have not been met, if any of the variance standards have not been met, they could deny the variance, which would require the southern lot to be consolidated into one of the lots already owned by the Kissners. However, as we said in the staff report, we do recommend approval of the preliminary plat and variance. Mr. Chair, this is a public hearing, and the applicants are here tonight.
Okay, at this moment, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody that would wish to address the time commission? At this point, I'll take a motion then to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All right, commission discussion and recommendation.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
If I can just ask a question. Kendra, is there any reason that this property that we're talking about is going over to the Kissners? Is that correct?
The southern.
The southern on the south side of.
Is being purchased by the Kissners.
The highways, is there any way, or is there any reason why we would not ask to move the boundary to include their driveway onto their property? Is there, does that make it messy?
Yes, because then they would have, and this is what they didn't want to do, to move that lot line, they'd have to replat the lot with their house on it. And at that point, once that's included, we'd just say, just make it one lot.
Okay. So, it's just easier keeping things separate right now? That's all I wanted to ask. I had a hunch, but I wanted to make sure.
Yep.
So, cool, thank you.
Kendra, I have a question. You spoke of a driveway easement. If they own both lots, why do they need to have an easement in place?
Because there's nothing that ensures they will always own both parcels.
But wouldn't you address an easement at the time of sale? Then that easement would be between, would be between you and the purchasing party.
You would think so if you didn't get the calls I get on a regular basis from landowners that don't have it in place.
So, they go through a sale and then, but they never do it?
Yes. So, this is not unusual when we do subdivisions where we will have an owner grant it to themselves. I'm trying to think of one that we did this on. It might have been the guy up on 117 the last time. But it doesn't, it's pretty standard practice to do that.
I don't remember that we've done one, but, you know, I believe you, but I just can't think of one where we've done that. Okay.
So, it's really for his, the landowner's protection, you know, if they were to sell a parcel or, you know, give it to their kids and the kids sell a parcel or something, you know, who knows? Things can happen, and this just protects them.
So, then the easement goes with the sale, the easement's transferable with the property?
Probably never gonna need it because, you know, who would buy the outlot? It's unusable, but.
Kendra, Lot 1, Block 1. So, in my first reading, the cemetery in the north portion does not have any development rights.
Well, the parcel is assumed to have a development right per se that's used by the cemetery.
Right, it's used it.
That's the development.
Because if, let's assume there were no, there was not a cemetery there, development could that have been transferred to the south portion?
Yeah, if this was a truly vacant lot, no cemetery, split by the road, and they wanted to do what they're doing, they would have to say which lot gets the development right and which one doesn't.
Okay. So, on the, I'm, I'm curious about the way this is worded. And I think I've got a fairly clear understanding of what's gonna happen here. But on page three then, under the variance, second to last paragraph, applicant has indicated they intend to sell the southern parcel that they are purchasing with one of the two adjacent parcels they own. And the two parcels there, what, I would assume those two parcels have development rights?
Correct.
They both do?
Correct.
Okay. However, they would like to keep it as a separate parcel for now to keep their options open. It makes sense. Then in the next paragraph, it says the second variance create a parcel without development rights. And halfway in, the future Lot 1, Block 2 is to be platted as an outlot, and is not planned to be developed. What, why is there such a contradiction in how this argument is being laid out? I mean, I can understand that they don't have plans to do it right now, but it's an option. They've stated in your application that they most likely sell it.
Yeah, I'm not sure, what's the contradiction?
Well, in the first paragraph, it says, they intend to sell the southern parcel. And then in the next one, it says there is no, is not planned to be developed.
Yeah, I don't know that, I don't feel like that's a contradiction, but, and Gene could certainly tell his story too. But the idea is they want to have this lot. And when I first met with them, I said, well, pick one of your lots and combine it with that because you don't have development rights and you don't meet the minimum lot size. And they said, I'm paraphrasing, we don't know which one of the two lots we'd want to combine it with, so can we just leave it? And then as we work through our estate planning, we'll combine this new outlot with one of those parcels and sell those, the outlot and one of our two parcels to a developer presumably, or both of our parcels in this outlot to a developer.
Okay, all right.
So, they're not doing anything today except acquiring the piece of property that their driveway's on in simplest terms.
So, on page two of four of the resolution, item four, it says there is one development right remaining on proposed Lot 1, Block 1, and no development right on Lot 1, Block 2.
Yeah, I probably shouldn't have used the word remaining. In fact, I could probably take, just start the sentence with there's no development right on Lot 1, Block 2. The point was, Lot 1 is what it is on the north, it's the cemetery. That's what I was trying to say, but.
Well, hence that's why I asked my question. If there was one building right remaining, why don't they just transfer it to the southern lot?
Yeah, and remaining, so remember when we did our development rights map update and we changed kind of how we're doing that?
Yeah, I remember that.
I think that's what I was thinking, but we could probably just delete the word remaining. Because it's a little confusing.
Yeah, it makes you think it's assignable, but it's not. It's already taken by the cemetery.
In fact, I think I would say on four, I would change it to say there is no development right on Lot 1, Block 2, period. Just take the rest out. So, when a person makes a motion, if they were comfortable with that edit, just make a note that we would change four.
And I guess in, similar to Commissioner Wu's comment, then, under item 8B, the applicant must submit a construction and maintenance agreement for the driveway for review and approval. I found that to be, I found that to be almost humorous as to, is it only because there's gonna be an easement that's created?
Yeah, I mean, the easement is the.
Because in the letter from the applicant, they say that they want an easement to be created.
Yeah, it probably, again, a mistake. It shouldn't say construction and maintenance, it should just say, it should submit an easement and maintenance agreement. Not construction and maintenance agreement.
Because I thought, well, does that mean they're gonna have to create or construct a new?
No, no, that, good catch, I don't know what, sorry about that.
No, no problem.
I think that's carrier for language from the stralers.
Well, that's all the questions I had. Any other discussions or questions?
Ready for a motion?
I'm sorry?
Are you ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
I'll move with all of the corrections we've noted here.
I'll second it, Lou.
All right, all those in favor of recommending approval of the resolution with the noted changes, say aye.
Aye.
And so, this will go, like all the other items on tonight's agenda, to the March 26 council meeting.
You know, I don't get down to drive a truck very often, but I might have to go down there and see that, that vegetable's handy.
You're welcome to come.
It's a good place.
You're welcome to come.
Make sure you check out the Oreo cookie cows too.
They're amazing, those cows.
Love driving by.
I love looking, I almost don't make the turn looking at the cows.
These department used to identify if there was an accident, if it was east or west of the, of the bull. I used to have a bull that with the white stripe painted on for a mailbox.
Sure.
Some, on graduation night, it disappeared a number of years ago. On high school graduation night, I think some young person warmed it up with his bedroom.
What are you so confused?
They didn't have no marker to the other end of the foot.
Where's the logo?
So, I did at least paint the current mailbox with a white stripe on it.
Oh, good to hear. Yeah.
Good.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item 6B, Bellwether fourth addition, final PUD going in.
Thank you, Mr., sorry, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a request for phase four, which is for 74 single-family homes and an outlot for the next phase. And this is consistent with the original approvals for Bellwether. This is the property that we're talking about, south of Steg Road. The south half of the property butts up to the new open space park. And when that south half of this outlot gets developed, there'll be additional park dedication happening. There is no park dedication in this particular phase. So, you can see on the screen, the outlined area is phase, it's called phase three because we remember we broke phase two up into four, or into two pieces. So, this is technically phase four, originally phase three. And the southern portion that shows us phase four on the map is the part that will include some additional land dedication for a park. It is not included in this, however, some grading is planned on that in order to balance the site between this phase and the next phase. So, all of the lots in this addition are the 44-foot wide lots. There are a number of home options that were originally approved. The street naming is generally consistent. However, there are a couple turnarounds we still need to work with them on for emergency vehicle turnarounds at the ends of the cul-de-sacs, noted in the blue and red circles on the screen. The utilities are available. There are some wetland buffer signs that are missing per the code requirements. So, we've noted those two locations and added a condition to add those. I did note, in case you picked up on this, there is FEMA floodplain in this phase. And we talked about this early on and sort of glossed over it, but it really popped out in this phase, so I wanted to highlight it. We did this in Ravinia too, also, I should say. The city engineer is working with the development team, and we'll do a final FEMA map amendment when the entire project is done. So, that's how the engineers have wanted to handle these. So, that will be mitigated within the project. It's a little tough to see on the screen today, but as I mentioned, the north part of the site is being platted today, but they are asking to grade the south half. And our standard is not to allow that, but we have allowed extensions like this when it's needed to balance the site from a soils perspective. And so, we do recommend approval of the off-site grading with the condition that the grading plan does need to be modified to create a transition, to create generally a flat area for that future neighborhood park in that southwest corner of the site. Again, no park dedication is required at this phase, with this phase. Park dedication was calculated as a whole. With each phase, we are monitoring the park dedication, and then we'll true it up at the end if there's any credit to be given or any additional fees to be paid. So, with that, we do have a representative from Polte here this evening if you have questions. But staff does recommend approval of the resolution approving the PUD final plan for Bellwether 4.
Okay, this is not a public hearing, so we will have commission discussion and recommendation. Kendra, I was just wondering, can you, just out of curiosity more than anything, the Outlet A, do we have a picture of what, what that will be approximately?
The future phase Outlet A, yeah. I don't know if it's in the attachments on PUD, but you look quick. I'm gonna look to the applicant to see if he can remember how big Outlet A is.
29 acres. 29 acres? It just, it just looked bigger than I was like. So, Kendra, I didn't see and note that floodplain line. So, does that mean those lots then are buildable now? Or is this gonna have to be worked out before any?
No, they're buildable now. We had it in some previous additions too. So, there is a mitigation plan that the developers, engineers, and our engineers are working through. We just don't formalize them, it's called a FEMA map amendment. We just don't formalize that until the entire development is done.
Because I saw, you know, options of bringing in fill and all this and that, I just thought, well. I always have this notion that sensitivity around the 100-year floodplain was a big deal. And, well, there's four lots at least that are impacted by this.
So, the lots will likely still be impacted in the sense that the lot's probably gonna have a tiny bit of floodplain on the lot, which I believe now FEMA still requires some flood insurance on. But the lot itself will be buildable. They will fill in the floodplain to create a buildable house pad and then mitigate for that fill, meaning if you're filling in an area that's gonna flood, you're gonna dig a hole somewhere else to mitigate it as part of that master plan.
So, would a homeowner then of that, of any one of those particular lots, would they have to get a different type of insurance policy for that, or?
Only if the structure itself is in the floodplain. So, wherever that boundary is set after the amendment, if the home is inside of that, they would have to get insurance required to.
So, what you're saying is the final map may move that, that line?
Yeah, what I was trying to say, the line might still be on the lot, but the house pads will all be out of the flood zone.
I did have one question. So, as you look at, let me get, any one of them, I was using here this one. So, I'm curious about the driveway for the existing house. Boy, that looks like it runs awfully, awfully close to Lot 1, Block 2.
It does.
I mean, do we have any issues there?
We did look at it at our staff meeting, and we believe it is not on Lot 1, Block 2. And that's why this didn't require any encroachment or any relocation. According to the survey, it is outside of the Bellwether project, and it is the existing driveway.
So, the fact that it's.
But it's literally on the lot.
I was just gonna say, it looks really close.
Which it is today, to be fair. I mean, it's on the lot line today. The difference is now there'll be a house up near that lot line.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's in, I can see it's in a utility easement. And then, you know, I remember when I built my access road down in my barn, I had to keep it five feet off the concrete.
Yeah, this really isn't a utility easement there. I mean, they showed it there, I think this was a layer. That house lot is not being platted, and they are not dedicating any DNU easement. So, I think that's just say they're putting their easement line on there.
Because, I mean, you've got the turnaround there anyway, don't you? Because 103 just ends at that property line?
Yeah, that's my comment, is they need to work on 103rd to provide turnarounds on both ends of it that comply, which maybe, they may need to do a hammerhead that makes one of those lots, either Lot 1 or Lot 28, unbuildable until the road goes through. That happened in Ravinia, if you remember. It's possible to do a cul-de-sac in there, does impact a couple lots, but that's an alternative. But we'll work with them to figure out what works best for them. It will not, you know, the road will not be able to be built right to the property line unless they get an eas, you know, an easement. So, they'll have to pull it back and provide a turnaround likely.
Yeah, okay.
In the staff report under wetlands, I just wanted to, I just kind of want to understand this last, the last two sentences. The applicant has indicated multiple lands would be filled. The applicant will have to comply with the Minnesota Wetland Conservation Act. Is that the, if you fill in a wetland, don't you have to then go out and find replacement of wetland at the rate of like 2:1 or?
Yes.
4:1? Now, does that have to be onsite, or can they pick that out anywhere in Minnesota?
You know, it depends very much on the watershed. In this case, I think they purchased credits off-site, right?
It has to be within the county generally, unless you get approval, otherwise.
Okay, and so you guys bought some wetland credits?
Yeah, purchase agreement, so do that, yeah.
Okay. And is it, is it 2:1?
Yeah.
And that's true for any landowner. You know, once you fill a wetland, and it varies depending on the type and things. I think more and more watersheds are looking to off-site credits because they were finding when you were recreating them on-site, they weren't being maintained like they should. So, I think we'll see more and more off-site credits in large wetland complexes being the resolution for wetland fill.
But do credits just, do credits really result? But do credits just, do credits really result in, so if I fill in two acres and I buy four acres of credits, does that really result in four acres of created?
Yeah, they're created wetlands. It's not like you're going and buying a wetland that already exists. Somebody went out and created 20 acres of wetland, and then will sell however many acres to developers or landowners as they need it. So, there are new wetlands that were created to offset the filled wetlands elsewhere. And so, the watersheds do look at, you know, first it should be in your city, in your watershed, and then it can kind of go out to be, as Chad said, in the county. So, it really is new wetland that's created.
Are they expensive?
Yeah.
So, if I took my 15 acres and created a new wetland?
Something to think about. There's a cost to it. Because you have to, you have to monitor it, but that's a real thing that people are doing, is buying land for the express purpose of creating wetland banks.
Yeah, it's about a five-year process, just saying, not easy.
Well, that's about when I look to sell the property.
We can hook you up with Wes, our wetland guy. Talk to Mike offline.
Well, I am pleased to see that Bellwether sticking to the original plans. It doesn't surprise me, given the product you're selling and whatnot, but it makes this a lot easier than all the changes that we've had experienced before, so. On my own behalf, I appreciate that. Any other comments or discussion?
No.
I don't know if I had anything in the resolution. I did not have any changes in the resolution.
I didn't see anything.
Anybody need time to review that?
No.
I don't.
All right, well, I'll make motion to approve the resolution for the final plan of unit development.
One second. Go ahead.
One second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is approved. Great, thank you. When you guys have to start on your clubhouse?
It started.
Is it?
I was going to say.
Drive over there.
Thought they'd started it.
You guys look like you're going to break flip. I drove through there, you know, I don't know, about a month ago or so.
The clubhouse should open in July.
Right.
And, yeah, we have over 70, so.
Well.
It's a hot market right there.
Good deal. Well, congratulations, that's good news.
Thank you.
All right, have a great day. Okay. All right, we will go on to succeed public hearing for zoning map changes and the staff report, please.
This is the first step in implementing our 2040 comprehensive plan. You'll remember, we talked about state law requires the zoning map to be brought into compliance with the land use map within nine months of adoption of the comprehensive plan. And that's what this item is doing this evening. There are 66 properties that are being rezoned as a result of this project, and they're being rezoned because either the land use changed, and so we have to change the zoning to comply with the land use, or the phasing plan changed, and they're now in Phase 1 of the zoning, or of the staging. So, because the, this is a significant citywide effort, and because the rezoning is more than five acres, individual notices are not required, but the public hearing notices were published in the official paper and were also posted online. So, this map was in your packet, and this was just a way to highlight the individual parcels that are being rezoned, so you could kind of see where they are. They're all in the musa. Nothing is changing outside of the musa. The zoning map in your packet, I also did by parcel number, so if you really wanted to go look at each one, you could look at the PID number, the current zoning, the new zoning, and the land use. And then, did it change because the land use changed, or did it change because the staging changed? So, what does that mean? What our policy has been is that everything in the Phase 1 sewer staging plan, which is 2022, excuse me, yeah, 2020 to 2025, is in Phase 1 and is zoned to match the land use. Everything outside of that is zoned urban reserve, which is a holding zone until development's proposed. And that urban reserve district allows people some interim uses before the sewer and water gets there. If you're zoned, for example, RSF 1, you cannot subdivide or develop your property unless the sewer and water is available and you develop it in compliance with the RSF 1 zoning district. But in the urban reserve, you have some ability to do cluster developments and some rural subdivision. So, it really is intended to give landowners more options. So, this is the new zoning map. It should look pretty straightforward. One of the big changes is in the town center now reflects the mixed use, the downtown mixed use district matches our new town center plan. The rest of them, I think, are pretty straightforward. Happy to answer any particular questions, but we do recommend opening the public hearing, taking comments, and closing the public hearing. And then, we do recommend that you move to approve the ordinance approving the zoning map amendment and the resolution approving findings of fact.
Great, thank you very much. All right, at this point, we'll open up the public hearing. I don't see anybody here for the public hearing. Certainly entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This public hearing is closed. All right, commission discussion and recommendation.
I have a question, Mr. Chair. What are some of the circumstances that this could affect some of the homeowners? If their properties were previously zoned one way and then, and then another later on, or update this way?
So, let's see if I can find a good example. Many of the properties are simp, most, I would say, of the properties are a result of land use changes, meaning it went from maybe a residential zoning district to a mixed use, excuse me, a residential land use to a mixed use land use. So, under the law, we're simply required to bring that into compliance. So, we went through the two and a half, three-year land use, or comprehensive plan update. Now, this is saying, you've already adopted the plan that made it mixed use, for example. This is rezoning it to downtown mixed use from residential zoning district in a couple cases. There's a few cases where it went from urban reserve, which is that holding zone, and now got zoned to match the land use because the property moved into the initial phase of sewer and water extension. So, depending on the individual circumstances, that might be a good thing that allows that landowner to sell the property for development. I think, yeah, the staging changes are most of them, and the land use changes are mostly in the downtown district, if you take a look at that, that map. Not exclusively, but it's one of the big ones. There, the other significant one that we talked about during the land use plan in some detail is behind the existing downtown business park, there's a large parcel that was reguided from residential to industrial, and so that piece is being rezoned from urban reserve to industrial. It's on the top of the second page, so.
So, out of the 66 people that I might meet at the rodeo?
Yeah.
What are the main, would there be many of those people having complaints about their properties being rezoned?
I don't think so, simply because we went through that two and a half-year comp plan update and did meet with some of them. Not all of them like the comp plan changes, so they may still have complaints about that. But this rezoning simply brings the zoning into compliance with the land use that we've already adopted.
Okay.
You know, though, Jim, I'll just add, I think, I think we're, it might show up on people, and this all depends on our local assessor, but, you know, some of these zoning changes now were, it would indicate that development is much more likely. And I know this because I did this in Eden Prairie.
Okay.
When the Met Council kept erasing the musa line, the pressure, you know, it was Highway 5, and then it went to Highway 1, and, you know, brought in bear path and everything else. But every time we moved that musa line and those zonings were changed, we had to reflect that in the market value. And now, a lot of those people at the time, they were all agriculture, so they were protected by the green acres.
Mm-hmm.
And that might be for a lot of these farmers, too.
Sure.
But the problem with that is that, is that what the assessor's going to do is he's going to carry one set of values for the agricultural value, which he pays taxes on. But then, there's a fair market value, which is going to be indicated much higher. And when that property is sold, it no longer qualifies as ag, you know, so like if the developer, like this stuff down here, I was going to ask Kendra about this, but, you know, once it's sold, then the back taxes on that are due for the current, two prior years. And I know in Eden Prairie, there were some developers that kind of backed out of those agreements, and those farmers were left high and dry with all these back taxes, and it put them, put them right in the poorhouse, you know, just like that. So, that is one, one unique thing. But again, I think it all depends on what Rolf is going to do, you know? Is Rolf going to pick this up? And is Rolf going to go around and all of a sudden start going, well, now this parcel is zoned this?
Oh, yeah.
You know, it's no longer, you know, urban reserve, but it's, or, you know, but now it's, you know, it's, it's single-family residential. You know, I was going to ask Kendra, two of the ones that I wanted to ask questions about are the ones down on the west of 116, across from Reservoir, which I believe is what, isn't that what Lennar is looking at for their new development?
Mm-hmm.
Well, that was one that changed. It went to a whole lot of yellow. And is that because that is a staged area now?
Correct. As part of the comprehensive plan update, the staging got modified, and that is now in Stage 1.
Okay. And the other one was the Peachtree property there along the center of Penn, on the north side of our downtown. Now, that was urban reserve before. Now, it's listed as single-family residential.
And that's a staging one, so what happened, remember, when Peachtree came in, they got a comp plan amendment on the land use to take it from high density to low density, and they amended the staging. And the zoning that was going with that was tied to the final plat, so the, it never got rezoned from urban reserve. You approved it contingent on things back in 2016?
Sixteen.
I'm trying to remember, whatever that was.
Yeah, because I think it's.
Well, I think your first approval was in 14.
Whenever it was originally approved, there was a staging plan that got approved, but the zoning never occurred, so it stayed urban reserve. So, yes, it is a staging change.
Yeah.
But it's kind of a change that's already.
Yeah.
Been through a public hearing, too, so, but yes, that's why it changed, because the staging plan changed.
Well, that was the only comment I had.
All right, well, I think, being that there's no questions about either of the ordinance or the resolution, we pass those into a vote at one time.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the ordinance pending Title 10 and the approving finding of fact?
So moved.
One second.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay. Okay, we will move on to seven, reports and information. A, planning project update. As it so happened, Kendra, after I read that, the thing, I saw on here, there's Sawgrass is still listed as number three in the existing projects, and it's listed as number seven as current project or new.
Yeah, you know, sometimes these things double up. Because they just came back and got an extension at the last council meeting, I added it as new, and at the next go-around, I would just revise number three. Perhaps that was more confusing than it needed to be, but we got a new application for an extension, and it was approved through August of this year.
So, if Emma and I homes then is going to come forth with a development plan, is that something the planning commission reviews?
So, the, if they come forward with a final PUD plan and final plat that is substantially consistent with the approved preliminary plat, that will come to you for final PUD plan approval.
But then, that's public hearing.
Correct.
Okay.
I think the substantial is kind of the part that's interesting.
Yeah, so if, I think you were the liaison at the council meeting, we talked about this, right? I'm not sure if it's substantially consistent. We know there'll be some modifications to the approved plan, which can be done with a PUD amendment that comes through with the final plan. If they ultimately decide to proceed, once they look at the details of the off-site improvements and things, we suggested they might want to come back to the council and ask the council, given these changes, do you think it's okay to, do you think it's substantially consistent so we can just go ahead with the PUD amendment and the final plans? Because I don't think we know enough today about what the changes would be.
No, and I think things, there've been some changes, as was noted at that meeting about the number of townhomes. Things have changed in the city since, as well.
Although, if you recall, I think you were on the planning commission when Sawgrass came in, right? We have three options for the townhome area that were approved, because different council members had different interests and appetites for townhomes. So, we had some small twin home concept that was approved and a larger row house townhome concept that was approved, so.
But originally, wasn't it an apartment building?
I don't think they had an apartment proposed, but I had to go back and look.
I thought the very original, the original application was for, like, an apartment building.
It could be, it was so long ago.
Gee, I think I remember that. I don't remember a single multifamily housing building. I don't remember that, but.
Anyway, so I don't know if this will move forward or not, but they got an extension, and they now have six months to look at coming forward.
Kendra, what is going on with IM4, park dedication ordinance update?
Uh, I think we're still on track for that April 2 public hearing. Again, it's a comp plan implementation, so recall that our entire park dedication ordinance is based on our comprehensive plan, parks' current cost. And now, we've updated the parks chapter, so we're in the process of evaluating, okay, how many parks do we have? How many miles of trail? What's the current cost to acquire land? What's the current cost to make the improvements? And then, we run it through our formula. And then we run it through our formula, and that'll establish a new park dedication fee. That's part of it. But it also tweaks the percentages of park dedication area due. So, we're gonna have a subdivision ordinance amendment, uh, because those land use percentages are just getting shuffled a little bit because of the changes in the comp plan.
But the, the ordinance itself can be updated anytime regardless of whether or not we've just updated our, our comprehensive plan, right?
The fee schedule can't. The fee schedule needs to be based on the comp plan, but you could, you are supposed to update it annually to adjust the pricing, but the formula has to be based on the comp plan. And our comp plan did make some changes to the parks chapter, so we needed to update that. Uh, but we should be updating the park fee schedule annually. The only reason it's coming to you is the park dedication changes with the land uses tweaks some of those percentages in that, if you remember the table in the subdivision ordinance, it says 10% land dedication for low-density residential or whatever the number is. That's why it's a public hearing. The fee schedule could just go to the council, but we're gonna run them together so everybody knows what it is.
You made reference earlier to state law, you know, the zoning update. It is required because it has to come into compliance with our comprehensive plan. And then, and I can see where that would be a state statute, but that only applies to everybody within the jurisdiction of the Met Council, right? Because everybody out of state doesn't have to do a comprehensive plan, do they?
I think you're, no, no, they don't have to. Only are required to do a comp plan in the seven-county metro. I'm not 100% sure if the compliance issue is required if you choose to adopt a comprehensive plan and you're outside of the metro. I don't think, I'm pretty sure the nine-month rule to bring it into compliance does not apply outside of the seven-county metro, but it's good planning practice, 'cause otherwise you can't really approve anything where the land use and zoning are inconsistent.
But it just strikes me as odd that our formula that, that is in the comp plan can only be changed once every 10 years.
Well, it's because you, when you set up...
We change the values, but we can't change the formula.
You could change your park plan more often if you'd like. You could amend your comp plan and change your parks plan. If you decided, you know what, gosh darn it, I want four more parks in Corcoran, you could go amend the comp plan, parks chapter, add four more parks, and then you would update the formula in the park dedication ordinance.
But that would be subject to the approval of the Met Council.
Yeah, we'll go through a public hearing process here first.
Yeah.
And then go to the Met Council.
Cool, thank you.
Is there something wrong with the screen? I've noticed it's pretty, it looks like a snowstorm.
Mike, you should've put a sign up for all of us. We've all asked, yes.
Dusty lens, huh?
Is the TV going bad?
Uh, no, I, we think it's the lens. We've got something coming out to look at it next week, so. We've done what we can with our limited...
I just didn't have time to do my hair.
Yeah, that's good. It worked on good.
All right, any other questions for the planning project update? All right, moving on then, uh, let's go to Item B, some council reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Sorry, I was a little tardy today. It's, a lot has gone on since we last met back in January. There's a lot on here. I'll hit some of the highlights. For land, we talked about, um, low-cost paving options and our assessment policy and what that would mean for properties with deferred assessments, and we talked about some type of depreciation component to that, so when pop, properties come in, they're not paying the full amount of the assessment. That's kind of conceptual, or kicking, staff's gonna come back with some information on that, and we'll kick it around some more and see where that goes. Then we had the environmental assessment, review of the Wessel property. We approved, there's no need for an environmental impact statement with that. We had a sketch plan for, I believe it's, was it Nelson Equipment?
Trucking?
Nelson Trucking. They're sale, they're a lar, a heavy equipment vehicle, sales and service, for international, I believe. Looking at putting a facility in the northeast part of the city. So, they brought a sketch plan to us, and we reviewed that and gave comment, and they went away with that, and I don't know if the city's heard from them at all since...
Yeah, Brad has.
So, it'd be up by the interstate?
Yeah, that'd be basically right at the corner of, well, just north, you know where the KOA is on 101?
Yeah.
Directly across from the KOA, in that area. So, when the Brockton interchange comes in, they'll be well-suited for, you know, accessing the interstate there.
Isn't there a bunch of houses there right now?
I think it's, I think there's a little farm hall.
Just one farm, isn't it? And it's got a lot of stuff on it.
This got plotted as part of Bellwether, because part of Bellwether Third was the back half of this property. It was owned by 101 Farms. So, this is like Lot 1, Block 5 or something of Bellwether that they're looking at, the parcel?
Yeah. That was that. Tom Anderson was appointed to fill our vacant city council seat until special election in November, I believe. And you heard about the Sawgrass extension, um, that came through. We talked about that and gave some feedback. I don't know if any of that feedback will be, will be used. I mean, some of it's, probably doesn't fit into the, the plan we had, but, and then we, uh, we agreed to purchase property for a site for a test well, so, acknowledge on 116. So, we're moving forward with our water plans right now, exploring that option for the city. Kind of high level, I don't know if you have any specific questions on anything that was on here.
So, I, I was here, um, I, I was here when they were talking about the sewer and water connection to Maple Grove for the Appaloosa Woods.
Yeah.
Does Maple Grove come back with anything, or is that just, is that gonna just be a process, it's just gonna take time?
I think we basically authorized staff to talk with the city of Maple Grove to come up with some type of plan. Then there was a neighborhood meeting, unfortunately, I missed that one, forgot all about it, and, where they were talking about future development in that area and, uh, the possibility of infrastructure, um, updates by Maple Grove and how that could impact the neighborhood, so. But, yeah, they're talking about it. They're gonna hopefully do something for that property owner so they can connect to the Maple Grove.
Any, uh, any, uh, any progress on the acquisition process with leasing of the holdout?
Oh, uh, we were, we were, I think we were awarded, we were awarded by the judge to allow to access the property for, I mean, it's just for assessments at this point.
Right.
So, yeah, that's moving forward.
Any other questions for council member?
No.
All right, well, thank you, sir. Appreciate your time and your presence, as always. And July 2nd meeting attendance, Item C.
We just wanna make sure we're gonna have a quorum, so, um, does anybody have a conflict that evening?
July 2nd?
First Thursday in July. We will have agenda items. Um, I, I think, as usual, be a busy summer, so I don't think we can skip that meeting, so if we are not gonna have a quorum, we're gonna need to find another date sooner rather than later. So, that's the question. Will everyone be here, or at least three of you be here?
I'll, I'll be back.
You'll be back?
I, I don't have any, my calendar just doesn't go beyond next week, so. So, as far as I know, I'll be here.
No plans for me. I'll be here. I'll be here.
Okay, so we should be good to hold that date. Excellent. Thank you.
Uh, Item D, other business, any other business? All right, uh, Item Eight, uh, liaison calendar. So, Meredith, you need someone to cover you for May 14th?
I am out of the country starting March 30th and, until June 24th, so I'm not sure.
I can, I can take that if you, if nobody else wants it, I can do it. Be happy to. Travel safe.
Thank you.
Please.
Well, I, being that you got the 16th of April...
Maybe before you volunteer, Mr. Chair, I might also note that on the 12th of March, is that right, Mike?
Yes, 12th of March.
March 12th, we're gonna be presenting the Planning Commission goals and you, to the council, and, Mr. Chair, you normally do that. I don't know if you and Jim wanna swap meetings at the front of the, in March, or you both wanna go on March 12th?
Jim wants to present, or you want Jim to present?
Right. But the 12th will be, someone from, from up there will be presenting the Planning Commission goals to the council.
Well, I, I know that the goals that we had sent, uh, set out, uh, one was the tree preservation. Um, I guess I, I, I might see some, some value in maybe, so you'll be here still then, right?
Yeah, I was, I mean, probably when I get back, I'll have to do every meeting for the rest of the year, but to make up for being gone.
On the 12th, you want to present just that one particular...
I wanted to speak to it, but I didn't, I wanted to be careful that, I didn't know whether I was gonna speak to it in open forum as a resident or speak to it as a planning commissioner as one of our goals.
You'd be representing the planning commission.
I can, I'm happy to just speak to that, my interest in that as a planning commissioner, yes.
We can have multiple speakers for the commission, right?
Did you talk to Brad and...
I, we, we did discuss that, but open forum's always an option.
That's why I thought...
I think generally we want one commissioner to present the commissioner's goals, the commission's goals, I mean. One person should do the presentation, but absolutely everybody has a right to speak as a public citizen, as a commissioner.
That's why I'm, I mean, I didn't know if, like, if you present this, the, the goals, summary of the goals, I could elaborate on it in open forum as a citizen, which I am, resident.
That would be before the presentation.
Quite. It would be actually before the presentation, just as, you know, saying that I'm interested in seeing this going forward, blah, blah, um, but, yeah. I could do that, or I could not do that.
That's the...
She could do both if she wanted to.
Right.
You could present, Meredith could be the Planning Commission representative who presents the Planning Commission's goals, and then you can, could stop and say, now, as an aside, this is very important to me personally and as a commissioner, or not as an aside.
Or she could, or she could do open forum before the meeting and then present. Just an option.
I need all goals written out for me, if I'm gonna present.
Brad usually does that for us.
Oh, he does? Okay. I just wanna do it, I just wanna make sure I don't speak out...
Brad will send, he'll, he'll send me a, a draft of it.
Oh, okay.
We can make changes. I don't know, does Brad send it to everybody?
I don't know that he sends it to everybody, that I don't know.
I don't think I've seen it. It hasn't come my way in past years.
Then that way, everybody has a chance to review and, and to chime in, make changes or add things.
It would be in the council packet, too.
Right, it would be included in the council packet.
But that, but by that time, it's said and done, right? So, what we're thinking, what you're, it sounds like what you're proposing, though, Dean, is that we get a draft ahead of time, and that there's time to do input, whereas if it comes in the council packet, it's already itemized and it's bullet pointed and...
Right, but it's, it'll come in the council packet tomorrow.
It was discussed at a prior...
It's just a summary of what you guys discussed, so it really wouldn't be appropriate to change it after you had the discussion on the goals.
Right, I guess, yeah.
So, he's drafted it probably already, 'cause it's going out in tomorrow's packet.
Okay, it's fine.
So, the question is, who, Jim has signed up to be at the 12th, um, and whoever is the official rep that night is going to present the goals.
Yeah, we had, um...
And so, as you're moving people around on different dates, you guys can always shuffle them around, but in addition to Meredith, uh, needing to change the May 14th date, I wanted to bring up the March 12th, just so you're all aware.
Do you wanna, do you wanna present?
I don't know what's involved in that, but I...
All you do is just take up a memo and go up there and...
Oh, sure.
And speak to the, and they may ask you questions. You know, sometimes there, there is some light discussion about our priorities. I, I know, I think we had a nice discussion with them about the tree preservation. It's not the first time we've, we've made it up.
Oh, I'll be coming along, too. I'll be.
I was planning to be here anyhow for that.
I, I wouldn't be scared to talk about tree preservation with the current council, given the, given the new members on the council.
Yeah, exactly. And you know what? And even if, even if we did have pause, I think it's important enough, we mention it again. That's my opinion. I'm gonna be here, I'll be at the 12th, so.
Okay.
And I'm not, like, again, you know, I don't, I don't want it to be my thing, it's not, it's, I thought, you know, that we were kinda interested in it.
I'm on board with it, too.
Yeah, right.
So, we had tree preservation, um, and, um, estimated practices, fertilizer guidelines, land use definitions, and PUD updates.
Yeah, the PUD ones were kinda, kinda ordeally, wasn't it? You were quite interested in that.
Well, and, and I know the, the, you know, the city council dealt with the issue.
It's been a question for them, too.
I, I have a question. Are all of you signed up to receive email notification when the packet is available, the city council packet?
No.
Were you interested in that?
Sure.
I can get it, all of you signed up if you want to, and then, then I'll, I'll link to the packet as soon as it's available.
That'd be great.
I can take a look at it while I'm away as well, see what's coming up.
Mm-hmm.